I'd like to call for all of you, the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education. We have a meeting on August 19th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the High School Hatchery. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public, but it's not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting, as indicated in the meeting document. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the Board. These items may include those discussed at previous meetings or presented to the Board in discussion recently. As the call is ended, please turn off the silence as helpful and stand proud and dignified.
Our flag is lifted to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm going to read our indigenous land acknowledgements. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge and appreciate the initial people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the initial people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since family memorial and whose land, which the Second Archibald Jean tribe has decided and was continuing to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the long-standing history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. I'm also going to read our educational government's agreements, and those are the headers. If you'd like to see the full document, I can leave it at our entry table. But as board members, we've related to the following five points: professionalism, respect and equity, inclusive collaboration, responsibility to a forward-looking vision, dedication to community engagement, and a commitment to continuous growth. We're going to do our roll call.
Can you read here?
Reading, I'm over here.
Tim Wodder here.
Yvonne here.
Nathan Thompson here.
Thank you, everybody. We need to approve our agenda. We need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And that leaves us for our superintendents to sit for the day.
Good evening, everyone. The first item under my report this evening is our presentation on our strategic plan. As you know, we've engaged in a long process of looking at our strategic plan and updating that. And this evening, we have with us Yvonne Kamal-Kennel, who is a consultant from the Michigan Association of School Board. And Yvonne is here to present a final report for us also. Yvonne, thank you for being with us this evening.
No, I would miss it for the world. Get my good side, Patrick. Good evening. I just want to say to begin with that it's just so wonderful to be with all of you again to share the final report of your strategic plan. Your whole community has been a real pleasure for me to work with. Now that I'm retired, I sort of scroll and come back to another board meeting, but it's always a pleasure to be with you as a board. Your commitment to this is a testament to your caring, the amount of caring in the culture of caring that you have for your community, and I want to honor and acknowledge that. So tonight, we're going to go through some documents. I'm going to share some information that you have a PowerPoint that you've already received about it all. But there are three documents that you have in front of you. I think aside from the PowerPoint, you have one document that's called the Final Summary, and that gives you all of the information that happened during the process of the strategic planning event. Another document that you have is called the Two-Page Summary, and that basically just boils down everything that's in the larger document into a more palpable, communicable type of document that you can share with your community. And of course, you have, since all of you were in the retreat, you have that large binder that you can add all of this to, which is why it's three-hole punch. And if you have any questions during the process of this presentation, feel free to just flag the end and ask away. So Jennifer, we have to have like a telepathic message on moving the slide forward. How would you like to do that? Just like that? Okay. Because we've been together a long time now.
We're connected.
Yeah, we're connected, yeah. Okay, great. So the first slide sort of gives you an idea of how long this process took. About a year ago, right about now, a year ago, I think MASP presented to the Board about the possibility of doing the strategic plan, and here we are a year later asking for your approval. Some of the, you know, events that took place, of course, were interrupted by travel or other kinds of things. But basically, what we did was, over the 12 months, you had the pitch, we came and asked you for it. You approved it in April of this year, and from April through to now, the process that we've employed is, you know, we've had all of the input sessions, face-to-face and online. We've had the retreat that you were at. We've had an implementation workshop just a week ago with Superintendent Relators' Administrative Leadership Team, and here I am tonight. So it's a 12-month process, and it was intense many times and certainly meaningful and revelatory in other times. So stakeholder input. One of the most important steps for the strategic plan is to get a sense of what the community, school community thinks it needs, what the school district needs, and what their feelings and voices are. And so to help identify the strengths and the challenges, the opportunities, the barriers, and provide some input on what they believe is the vision, we had stakeholder input. And of that stakeholder input, there were 634 responses, both face-to-face and online. And that's a testament to the amount of energy, I think, that the community had to make sure that their voice was heard. So I appreciate that. You were all at the retreat on June 12th, which was an exciting event, seven-plus hours, including a little bit of pizza and some wonderful salad. And everyone worked really hard to develop the most important things, you and 21 other community members, there were 31 people altogether. To develop a mission statement, a vision statement, goal statements, things that you believe in, our belief statements. And so it was a long day, but it was extremely rewarding, and I know when I went home, my ankles were swollen, but it was just so, so great to finally be able to come together to decide on how we wanted to move forward. And the next slide would just give you an idea of who all of the retreat participants were. All the board members, great, and many of the community members, stellar voices to help move the district forward. So the outcomes of this, of this event were a mission statement, which I see you already, Superintendent, you've already started to use it, which is great, because the more you can share with people what your mission is, the more that they'll feel like you have one, right? That you're moving forward. So your mission. And Tim, and you don't mind if I use first names, because it feels kind of form-formal if I said, you know, Dr. Pango, ladies and gentlemen. Just, I mean, I could, if you wanted to. Would it be, now that I have said it a little bit better than it is the first time? So Tim, could you read what the mission statement is for, for us?
The mission of Mount Pleasant Public Schools is to empower excellence in all aspects of our school community.
Okay, that's the mission statement that you all designed at the retreat. And Luin, would you read the vision statement?
Yes. The vision for Mount Pleasant Public Schools is to be an inclusive, learning community, a responsible, engaged, and empowered citizens.
Both wonderful statements. The third statement we decided on was, what are your beliefs? And what you believe in? And Katie, can you tell us what it is we believe in here?
We believe all students are learners, in the value of relationships between schools, families, and community partners. Schools make positive lifelong impact on the life of learners, and schools should be an inclusive, supportive, and safe environment for all.
Thank you. Those were guiding principles for the goal statements that we now have as a result of the retreat. And I think it's appropriate for the superintendent to read what your goal statements are.
Mount Pleasant Public Schools will strategically and intentionally use data to explore and implement instructional strategies that will focus on effective student engagement and learning support initiatives for all. We will explore and implement strategies to support and reinforce a culture of belonging for all. We will develop a collaborative and strategic communication plan to strengthen community relationships in order to increase MPPS's value to the community. We will foster an environment of support and belonging for all personnel, and we will strengthen policies and procedures and explore additional opportunities to increase school community access to a safe learning environment.
Great, thank you. And I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that all, each one of those goal statements are encapsulated within five major areas: academics and programs, learning environment and culture, community and communications and community relations, personnel and leadership, and the final one, operations. So on August 12th, we shared these five goal statements, the mission statement, the vision statement, and the beliefs, to Jennifer's ALT Administrative Leadership, Administrative Leadership Team. And there were about 25, 24, 25 people at the session, and from those goal statements, we asked them to develop more granular objectives with those goal statements that would be priorities over the next, the next year. Those are all the things we did at the, at the implementation workshop on August 12th a week ago. We started really early and we went, we ended a little bit later than we had anticipated. We cut into your Welcome Back to School meeting, which, thank you for allowing us to do that. We're really sorry we did, but we did. But we got some great work. Everybody contributed. It was wonderful work. And so the next slides I want to share with you are the specific priority objectives that, that were developed from this meeting on August 12th. So the first area, academics and programs, you already know with the strategic goal statement, was strategically and intentionally use data to explore and implement instructional strategies that will focus on effective student engagement and learning and supportive initiatives for all. This particular issue came up many times, if you remember, in the retreat. How do we get kids more engaged in instruction? What do we do, what do we need to do to find methods of instruction that will increase student engagement? It went all the way from, you know, Project Based Learning, which is known as PBL, all the way to cooperative learning strategies and everything in between. And so a lot of discussion at the retreat a week ago was, was going on about this particular goal, because of course, it's the core mission, right? It's the core mission of the school district, is instruction, learning, academics, student performance. And so from that session, we came up with these three priorities. And Amy, do you want to tell us what those three priority objectives are for the first year?
Sure. They're research high-yield student engagement strategies, collect and analyze data illustrating the relationship between student performance and behavior, and collect and analyze data about the extent to which the curriculum is being implemented with fidelity.
Great. And so from those priority objectives, there are specific strategies and activities that need to take place in order to accomplish those objectives to accomplish the goal statement. That's the further work that's going to happen after I, after I leave you today. The next area, of course, culture and learning environment, really important other part of the core mission of schools, talks about exploring and implementing strategies to support and reinforce a culture of belonging for all. And Tim, do you want to tell us what those priority objectives are for the first year?
Continue and enhance capturing kids' hearts and efforts throughout the district. Develop a district-wide inventory of support services that are being provided in each learning environment to ensure coherence. Initiate an audit that identifies and analyzes student behavior practices, policies, and consequences across the district in order to ensure physical and emotional safety.
Thanks. On this particular goal statement, there was, I would say, quite a bit of conversation about coherence across the district, what, what each school is implementing with regards to behavior practices, behavior procedures, and behavioral consequences. And we sort of came up with our, you know, Richard Elmore, who's deceased now, but he was one of the gurus in school improvement, planning and school improvement structures. And he talked about districts that are tightly coupled and districts that are loosely coupled, and meaning that if you're tightly coupled, then there's this, you know, widespread coherence so that if a child moves from one school to the other, there are no real surprises in how things are implemented, how disciplinary procedures are implemented or whatever. So this became sort of our joke inside of, you know, when we were reporting out by groups, I know if Linda can remember this, but reporting out by groups, someone would say, yes, and that's tightly coupled. And we're like, yay, we're embedding tightly coupled coherence in our minds. But one of the objectives that came out of this was to make sure that we knew what was going on in all the schools across the district so that we had coherence throughout the district, which was another issue that was brought up at the retreat as well. The third area, communications and community engagement. Nathan, do you want to take that, what those priority objectives are?
Sure. Launch a new strategic plan through comprehensive communication to the school, community, and provide examples of excellence in the district. Initiate an audit that analyzes and develops a cohesive plan for district messaging, communication platforms, and target audiences in order to increase family involvement and increase update completion of all stakeholder contact information.
Thanks. And yes, that was one of the issues, like, well, we're not really, we really need to get a handle on some accurate information on who our school community is, what are their addresses, how do we communicate with them, how do we access them? So that became a really important objective, and it's very doable the first year, right? It's a doable objective. A lot of, many times, people develop objectives that might take, you know, three or four years to accomplish, but all of these objectives that were put out here, to me, feel like they're very doable in the first year. And of course, Superintendent will launch the new strategic plan. When, when is your date for that?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Okay.
So we'll send information out tomorrow, and then our, our certified staff and our support staff come back on Wednesday, so we'll continue just presenting.
It's such a great way to let everyone know this is where, we're strategically moving forward in a way that makes sense. We've heard from others. You make the announcement to everyone, and then for the rest of the year, you have, you have a structure around within which to build communication with your community and of course, with your board. Goal area, of course, personnel leadership. The strategic goal statement was foster environment of support and belonging for all personnel. Katie, can you tell us what those priority objectives are?
Yes. So develop and provide staff handbooks in each school throughout the district. Develop and provide a cohesive onboarding process for all administrators and new staff, and create an inventory of resources for staff administrators.
So there's a little bit of loose coupling with regards to this particular area, where people were kind of like, well, we, we have onboarding, but we're not really quite sure it's cohesive across the district. Do new administrators have a checklist that gives them idea of what should happen when? Do brand new teachers, how do mentors handle brand new, brand new teacher onboarding? And does every school have a handbook for, for staff to look at? So those were all kinds of things that were being discussed at that particular, in that meeting a week ago. And the last one under operations, the strategic goal, and you'll recall, because you were at the retreat, there was a lot of discussion about access and in-district busing, remember? And so out of this information, strengthen policies and procedures and explore additional opportunities to increase school community access to a safe learning environment. Now, you'll notice that there are a couple of objectives here, priority objectives, that are in direct response to student input. Student input. Well, at least one. Maybe not the cell phone one, but definitely the baby one. So Jennifer, do you want to?
Hi.
We're going to develop and implement your policies and guidelines regarding the needs of cell phones in each school. Develop and implement your policies and guidelines regarding the needs of leaving any school, and explore re-establishment of initiative policy.
That was a very key point from the retreat. Are there different ways to handle it, but there definitely needs to be an exploration about it as, as well as identifying the goal statements. Thank you. So as we move forward, what, what we're asking you to do is to approve the mission statement, the vision statement, the belief statements, and the goal statements, not the objectives. We're asking you, and I shouldn't have made fun during an approval request, so I apologize. That's what five years of retirement would afford you. Just, just to make sure that we understand, we're not asking you to approve the objectives, just those four areas, the mission, vision, belief, and goals. Moving forward, there are some things that we're recommending that, that you all do, and most specifically, a lot of this falls on Jennifer's responsibilities, is to make sure that we align the strategic plan with MYCIP. And in the implementation meeting a week ago, there was quite a bit of information for the group on how the strategic plan actually fits into the new MYCIP system, which is something that MASP has been working on with MDE for a couple of years now. We don't want there to be one plan for MDE and another plan for district, that the two of them should be married together. You'll align your strategic plan with the budget for this year, next year, and you should develop a board recording calendar on what's happening. I sort of say to people, you know, a strategic plan is kind of like a bond, where you're always reporting to the community what's up with the bond initiative, how much money we spent for the bond, what projects have been done. A strategic plan is, you know, is a five-year, you know, plan for moving an entire district forward, not brick and mortar, but nonetheless, you know, sort of like the core mission of the district. And I, I think it's important to report back on a regular basis what we've done, what we've accomplished, and, and what we've, you know, red light we haven't accomplished, green light we've accomplished, whatever system you should, you want to develop, like a reporting. Now, for me, when I did a strategic plan in Lansing, at the end of the year, I always did a superintendent's report at the end of the year. And I asked every one of the departments to supply information to me on what they have done during the year specifically related to the strategic plan, so that when we put our report together, it was strictly related to what we've accomplished with, with the strategic plan as our structure. So I'm sure Jennifer will come up in a way probably much better than I did, but nonetheless, some, something, some framework to hang your hat on as you move forward. You'd have to develop some implementation strategies for all of the objectives that we outlined, and of course, create an opportunity for stakeholder involvement. And at the end of the year, you know, if you want us to come back and take a look, that's okay too. So these are Jennifer's final thoughts, and I couldn't agree with her more, but collaborating with the Mount Pleasant Public Schools, the Board of Education, the administration staff, the entire community, we really illustrated their level of care for the schools, the community, and most of all, your students, who are, were, and are delightful. And that kind of concludes my, my presentation. Do you have any questions? Do you have any comments or concerns or feedback at any time?
I have a question. Regarding the goals, how, how do we manage that component of it, right? So you said, I mean, not the goals, I mean the objectives, right? So the goals are aligned, and you've created the objectives. I'm assuming there's a much larger laundry list of objectives? So is there a process that every year we kind of pull the three or four top? Who does that? Is that a gentleman in the administrative team? How does that process work?
Yeah, so she'll have her, Jen will have her own process, but I sent her, what I did was I took all the information from last Monday and I put it in an Excel spreadsheet by quarters. So you take your goal statement, you take your objective statement, and then you divide it up into four quarters as to what needs to happen in each one of those quarters in order to finish at the end of the year that objective. Within each of those, you know, within each of those quarters or timelines, there are a series of strategies that need to be implemented. That's something that Jen and I are starting to talk to her staff about, fleshing out. What are those strategies that need to happen? So the first quarter one is, we're going to commit to develop an audit to find out how the support, what the support services look like around the district. That could be first quarter. All of the things that need to happen within that, you know, that objective or that activity or, you know, that sub-objective, all of those things need to be fleshed out, you know, what's the criteria for the committee establishment, you know, what's the inventory we're going to use, what's the timeline for it? So all of those activities need to be fleshed out in each one of those quarters, and that's the responsibility of the administrative leadership to do that.
The other question?
Did that help?
Yes, it did. The other question I have is, we've all recently been to the Michigan Association of School Boards, training for superintendent evaluation.
Yeah.
Which we are well required to do. And do you have any recommendations on how to best link some of that work to the strategic plan and these specific goals? There's different tools and different mechanisms within that, but I didn't know if you had any recommendations or things to help us. A lot of that passed, because there's a lot, right? There's a lot of pieces here, and we can't expect everything to be delivered in a high level, you know, our presentation for everything, right? So is there a way that we could help guide Jen and ourselves better see how we move forward with that linkage?
I think there would be a conversation you'd want to have together on whether or not any of this would be included in the evaluation materials, because, you know, every superintendent co-develops, I would imagine, in the best-case scenario, how they're going to be evaluated, what are their goals that they're going to be evaluated on. In my case, I, I used my strategic plan to evaluate process. And, you know, and I would say, okay, you know, I'm using, let's say, I'm using academic performance, and maybe one of the objectives under academic performance was, as it was, analysis of classroom instructional strategies. And so did I accomplish that analysis of classroom strategies? Yes, and here's the data to show you that it was accomplished. So these are, this is a great framework for any superintendent to use as, as a, you know, help in deciding what those goals and objectives would be. So it doesn't have to be the entire evaluation, but pieces of it would be very helpful. I'm sure Jen's already looked at it to say, I would pick this goal, you know, I would pick this objective, I would, I would take a look at all of this and make sure that it's embedded in my evaluation so that the board would know what it is that she, and what the board thinks is valuable too. I mean, that's the conversation you would have. Does that help?
Yes, it does, thank you.
I have a similar kind of follow-up question on this. What's your recommendation on how often our superintendent presents that data? Is it once a quarter, once a month, so that we have that right balance of bringing it up, but not so much sure that they might? I mean, you can tell everybody out and allow you to express a little idea. And so in your experience, what have you tried?
Yeah, every board had, I've worked with handles that reporting cycle differently. I was with a board recently that had a financial report every single board. We, I mean, had updated huge, you know, every, you know, projections and the things that I would have to do four times a year. It was done every single month, and I, I felt like that was a little bit overkill, in my opinion. But that's the way they handled it. On this particular case, what, I'll just say what I did, and that was I did it three times. Three times a year. You can't do it at the beginning of the year, because this is the beginning of the year, okay? So you're seeing what it is, what the plan is. I would imagine that sometimes for budget planning for the following year, you'd want to know how to manage the budget to get through the rest of the objectives. You know, if these are important objectives, you're going to want to put resources towards those objectives. So the next time might be, you know, the next middle time might be December, so before break, and then for sure before budget season begins, and then at the end of the year, it could be accomplished. So for me, it would be three times a year would be good, because your first time of the year, you, you know, unless you change your cycle next year. But you'll have, you'll have your audit, right? You'll have your audit in October, November. I don't know when is your audit generally?
Apparently, they present second week of October.
Yeah, ours was always first week of November, but in October. So that's a big time for reporting out, so the money reporting out, and if you have a bond, bond reporting out, and this kind of sits back down for a little bit while things happen. And then the next reporting cycle would be short, I would say shortly before break, like what's happened so far. And definitely for budget season, you have to figure out how you're going to incorporate your budget expenditures vis-à-vis the activities that you outlined for the strategic plan, because they don't happen in a vacuum, and they'll be just, won't happen for free.
Thank you, Nathan.
We could also follow, we're a trimester district. We could follow our trimester schedule once a quarter. Once, you know, I know a lot of things we talk about, once a quarter. We always do once a trimester, so that would fit nicely with that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, I think that that's really enough reporting, I think. I mean, you'll, you'll probably report to the board on a more frequent basis on things, but, but for a community report, I think three times is good. Any other thoughts? Questions?
One more comment. Thank you for coming, taking your time with us, and walking us through this process. You managed to make it fun?
Oh, yeah. I have to do strategic planning, and I think you're knowing that well, but thank you for your time. Yeah, no, very welcome. I, I was really, my Yeah, no, very welcome. I, I was really, my buddy, Mount Pleasant, all the way through. I really loved working with, uh, Mount Pleasant a lot, especially with this one. This, this lady right here, she's great, and you guys are great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck. Now, I'm going to take this fancy, sorry, I need to go over there.
Yes, let me, before you go, you finally, let me give you your, um...
Oh, my, oh, right. Hey, you have good things on.
I, I don't want anything else.
Just the tea, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Yep.
Thanks.
We're going to move on to my next, uh, next subject in our report, which is our presentation from, uh, the Oasis Alternative Education Program. We've got Jeff Clancy and Stephanie Brynder here to give us some data on all of the work that's been happening over there. So, thank you all for being here.
Okay, thanks for having us. Um, so...
Sorry.
Dancing with these here. Um, I'm going to start and specifically talk about our CSI designation. I've had the pleasure of working with Oasis the last two years, uh, on our MYGIF, which is our, um, integrated, uh, improvement process through MDE. And as you know, a couple of years ago, the Oasis School, um, was put on the comprehensive support improvement list, um, and that is determined by schools that are in the bottom 5% of schools in Michigan, or has a four-year graduation rate of 67% or less. And so, that's how we were, um, given that, uh, label a few years back. So, I just wanted to show you some of the data that, where we started, where we're at now, and I'm just going to talk about some of the things that we had in place to continue the improvement. Um, so, back two years ago, they looked at the 21-22 data on, on the school index, and they gave us an overall index of 12.27. They really looked at that graduation rate and the growth index. Um, and so, this year, when our school report came out, that index went from that 12.27 up to 32.45. So, we're definitely making gains there. Um, the next data point that I really want to show you though, that kind of digs into those a little bit more specifically, um, is our school report card. And so, we're going to really look at the data on it. This school report where MDE also, um, associates a grade with as well. Um, so obviously, we still like to do more improvement on these, but I'd like to show you how we've been doing on those. So, looking at our graduation rate, um, especially specifically for the CSI, they really look at that four-year graduation rate, and from the 21-22 school year to the 22-23 school year, we're able to improve that four-year graduation rate, um, by just over 2%. Now, that's heavily weighted on the four-year graduation rate, and as you can imagine, it's difficult for us, because a lot of the students that are coming to us are already extremely credit efficient. So, that four-year rate is really difficult to obtain a lot of times, because we may get, um, a student that has, by cohort, should be a junior, but is coming at a freshman-level credit. So, that four-year rate is difficult, um, but we are making improvements there. On attendance, in the 21-22 school year, um, we had 36%, that were not completely absent, and that has actually dropped. So, attendance continues to be an issue. I think the biggest drop there is that we've gotten really good at tracking attendance, though. As you know, last year, we were asking students to come in and attend, um, where that wasn't always the case before. They had more options of being virtual. So, I think we've gotten a lot better at tracking that data, and so I think, while it is a drop, I think it's also a sign of how good we are tracking it, and we're getting more realistic data now. The next one is our assessment participation. This is a big one that, um, we had over a 14% increase in the 21-22 school year, where only 39% actually coming in to take those, um, state assessments, where, um, in 22-23, we had 53.9% of our students come in and take it, and that also greatly, um, helps us when it comes to these ratings. In the growth area, we, um, also improved on that. Um, and this is looking at our students, they, they look at their test scores over time, and wanting them to be on track to maintain our reach proficiency. So, um, we made gains in both ELA and math on those, and I think that also speaks to having more students testing, so we're getting a better dataset to look at. So, we are showing growth in that area as well. For proficiency on these assessments, um, also making gains, um, our math dropped a little bit, but overall, um, some big growth in our ELA as far as, um, how many students were proficient on those assessments. So, 7% in the 21-22 on ELA, and then we went up to 40% in 22-23 for ELA. Math did have a little bit of a drip going from 8% to only 3% proficient. Now, the other, the next thing that they do is they look at us, and they look at like peers. So, there's a list of 30 schools, uh, that are like similar programs to ours, and they rate us and, and how we're doing compared to those. Um, and so, this one, uh, has lots of different standard deviations built into it, but you can see that our reports, our grade level letter really improved from a need to be based on how we're performing in comparison to our peers. And so, with that, there's lots of things that we are continuing to change and to move, um, to put into place. We are, um, bringing on some new staff, and Jessica and I talked about that, but as part of the process, we have, um, three school improvement goals. We have our MTSS academic goal, and that's really about having our students receive access to that tier-one instruction. And so, with that, we ask all students to attend, so that they have access to teachers that can help them with those contents. Um, we're, we have them attend the math and the ELA class. Uh, we've implemented an early warning intervention system, and for short, we call it E-WIMS a lot. Um, through this CSI process, we've had access to an MDE E-WIMS coach. She's come, um, and worked with us, we meet, uh, almost weekly, um, at least probably three times a month. And what this is, is about having great data collection systems, so that we can see who's the most at risk, and then really match them on services that they need. Um, and then putting academic goal-setting into place, and having those one-on-one, big conferencing, um, meetings with students, so that they can really take ownership of their work and, um, have a work plan, so they know what steps. Right, some of the big things we're doing at tier-one. Um, for tier-two, we are, uh, or not tier-two, I mean, for our whole child pool, we are continuing the CKH work. Um, last year, our staff were trained, as you know, we have many new staff coming on board. Today, they were able to send in the CKH one again. They'll be back tomorrow, and then get CKH later this week. Um, also looking at adding many different extracurricular activities, just to help students to feel more connected to the school and engaged. And for support and teaching and learning, we have lots of different PD options that we're offering our staff members to help support them. Um, one is we utilize that Centric learning platform. Next Monday, they will begin getting a day-long training on Centric, um, and how to run reports, and all that is announced to support students with that. We will continue to have E-WIMS coaching, and, um, looking at that data and getting better at those collection systems and matching students with those services. We're having all the CKH training this week, and that will continue to move forward throughout the school year. Um, they're called campus traction visits and process champions, to make sure that this work continues. Um, we're also going to train our staff on student engagement strategies at Oasis. It looks a little different, because they do have some at home virtual times, so we're going to be specific with our training for our staff to make sure that we can meet those needs as well, as well as some de-escalation strategies, so that when students are on the rise, we know what to do, and make sure that we get them that level. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff now, so he's going to talk more about some of the things that we have and structural differences in our program this year.
Hello, everybody. Um, so some of the interesting parts about this is that for a decade, our data collection was not very good. And so, that's one of the things that, especially with the help of Joyce Castellano, but definitely with Stephanie, we've been working on a lot, is there, there were stretches where our Centric system, that way we use, was not communicating with PowerSchool and stuff. So, sometimes to look at attendance, it was different in Centric versus PowerSchool, and only one of them gets updated with the state and stuff like that. So, some of it has been, to really make improvements, you've got to have good data, and that's one of the things that Stephanie's been fantastic at, Joyce Castellano's been fantastic at, Chris Teal with the state has been fantastic at, that helping us make sure we're making decisions based on good data. And there's little things that sometimes don't reflect in the data like that. I, I think it's interesting, uh, SAT testing and, and score results and stuff, because sometimes what happens when, you know, years in the past, when we might only be testing 25 or 35% of the students, well, of course, the students that are testing are the students that are considering college careers and stuff like that. So, by getting twice as many kids to take the SAT tests, which we've done from three years ago to this last year, suddenly, your, your data looks a lot different, but it was because of a data collection error. And there's things that in the past, we didn't do well enough with, like graduation data and stuff like that. So, on the surface, in the last three years, the number, the pure number of Oasis grads went from seven to 17 to 36. So, we're seeing more grads, but it's not reported accurately, which has had some flaws in the past. It's tough, because we don't have great data, but we're fixing that. Um, so, some of the surface data, what our kids are, are telling us, is our kids, when we talk about what do we need to support your learning, our kids have come really back with three big things, and it's social, emotional growth, it's socializing and stuff. A lot of our students will say, you know, I work alone on a computer at home for three or four hours. I come to school, and then the teachers want to say, quit talking, get to work on your computer, which is a wonderful thought. I mean, that's, that's how they're going to graduate, but students are like, no, there's a social element of life and stuff too. And we'll come back to that, because, God, it's a big part of what we're doing moving forward. And then the other, the other part is the goal-setting, time-management, and communication piece. So, what we work at a lot is to make sure that all of our time coming into the school year is valuable time spent. So, what we don't want is a student can sit home on their couch and work on math, science, and English. We don't want them to come to school and sit at a desk and do the exact same thing. There's no real motivation to come to school if it looks exactly the same as it does at home. So, what we've done is their first class period of the day, not, we'll start with a goal-setting and communication piece. They will come in every morning and spend 10 to 15 minutes of time saying, this is what I want to accomplish, big picture for the whole year, but also, this is what I want to accomplish this week. And if this is what I want to accomplish this week, this is what I have to do one day to fill in, if there's Friday to get there. And then, the communication piece will be, at the end of the week, our students will have basically a weekly progress report that they will take home to give to their parents, their families, anybody that's actually supervising their education, so that they can see, is my student progressing the way they want to? Um, and then, of course, we're not going to put, I love our students, but I'm not going to put 100% of my faith in their communication skills, so every third week, staff will send home a progress report, so that we want to honor the students, but, you know, we want to have their back too. So, every day, our students are going to have a goal-setting communication piece built into their schedule. And then they'll do math or English, because those are what we focus on with their per-hour class. And then we'll have a 30-minute elective class in the middle of the day. And this is where we've been talking about, it might be a sports class, it might be disc golf, it might be flag football, it might be a yearbook class, it might be a poetry club or something like that. But the key will be, in this class, students can self-choose what class they go to. So, if they want, if they want to go to the yearbook class with their best friend, we're a paper route, whereas the rest of the day, if you want to go to math with your best friend, but your, your best friend is in algebra two, and you're doing pre-algebra, that doesn't necessarily line up, but, so everything will still be through Centric, but we'll have more opportunities for the socialize and be collaborative, to be, you know, build those work skills, build, build those job skills, where we have to know how to regulate our emotions and cooperate and be patient and communicate and stuff like that. So, they'll have that elective class in the middle of the day, and then they'll go to math or, um, English next. And they'll finish with what we call a launch, which is totally stolen from capturing kids' hearts, which it's okay to steal great stuff. So, we, we steal the launch idea from capturing kids' hearts, but it's going to be the, the end, the launch is going to be all social, emotional stuff. So, our kids don't necessarily know how to regulate their emotions. So, that end of the day, we'll, we'll build in structures from there. Um, and we'll steal ideas from second steps, and our council will build ideas and stuff like that, but, but a lot of our students don't know how to self-regulate. They don't know what a good website looks like. They don't, they don't know how to have a conversation with their boss when their boss messes up their pageant. And so, we can't just trust by doing math, science, and English if they're going to learn those, so we're going to teach those. And then, obviously, the target will be, if our kids goal-set and communicate better, if our kids collaborate better, if our kids build their social, emotional skills, they'll enjoy school better, their attendance will go up. They'll have better skill sets to complement with the math, science, and English, and they'll graduate at a higher rate, and our multiple numbers will go up. So, that was my part of it, so I guess it's questions.
I'll start with some questions. Thank you for sharing us with all this. My first question is on the data part. Um, we have the information for 21-22, and then 20, so 20-22 to 20-23. Is there any indication that our last year, 20-23, 20-24, is similar to what you showed us? I'm guessing, I, I guess I don't really understand the platform you use enough to know.
So, this is all from state data, so that hasn't been released yet. It's all on my school data, which is, um, accessible by the public. Um, but as soon as they release it, we'll know. I mean, based off of their performance this year at school, we believe that things will be positive, and numbers will continue to rise, but it's one day, one task, like, we're going to score.
So, that makes more sense. It's not really so, you have those, so you can't show us this.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah.
Although, I would add, if you ask specific questions, I mean, we had, as for chief, that Joyce Castellano, with the other course, when we tracked attendance, and our attendance rate was just a touch above 80% this year, which is far better than it's been in past years and stuff. Our graduation stuff is up, our number of students testing is way up and stuff. So, we can tell you what we have at the building level, and what we're counting is, is going to turn up, but it's not official until the state comes up with their information, which isn't up yet.
That answered my question. Thank you.
How are you going to communicate this new daily structure with the students?
So, part of that would be an orientation, but, um, we've also spent time this summer, so we, we called every one of our students this summer, and we tried to keep it light, because not every student wants to hear from the Oasis staff in the summer, but basically, we made phone calls where it was like, how's your summer going? You know, is there anything we can do for you? Do you have questions about the fall? Oh, and by the way, and some of it was more just procedural, like, this year, Oasis, so last year, Oasis wasn't using final forms yet, and the rest of the district has started using final forms. So, this year, Oasis is 100% using final forms, and so, we've managed along with, yep, one of the big changes coming up this year will be that everybody needs to get into final forms, and we encourage you to do it in July, and then August, before school starts and stuff. But then we also, you know, so we updated our handbook, and we'll go over all that in orientation. Um, and orientation will remind students, I mean, some of the changes, we, we, we want to be as similar to the rest of the district as, as is appropriate and stuff. So, little things like cell phone policy is going to mimic the rest of the district and stuff, and that will be a little bit of a shock to this, to some of our students and stuff, but as, as long as we communicate it clearly, our students have shown that they want to be successful, they, they want, they, they want to make the adults in the building happy. They understand that putting it home is a way, will make them more successful and stuff. So, yeah, so it's, it was phone calls, but then orientation is the big thing.
Thank you. Speaking of orientation, are you having an open house slash orientation that the public can come to, or?
So, at this point, we're just starting with student orientation, so, no, we don't So at this point, we're just starting with student orientation, so we don't have a public open house yet. Now, a big part of our plan, though, and so we're working in, we want to include families in our building activities much more often. In the past, there's been a little bit of a divide between families going to the alternative, where they don't show up at the same rate as families might go to the elementary schools and the middle school and stuff. But so what we're working on is a lot of ways to make it more collaborative, and we're calling it like micropr- microprudentials and things like that. So what we want to do is have CPR classes in the evening and invite, and invite parents and students. So then parents are in the building, and it doesn't feel like open houses and things like that, because they haven't gone to that type of stuff in the past. There's other trainings that we can do, CPI tricky escalation type trainings and stuff like that. Down the road, we'll get to like more substance abuse things, these are the types of things that our council will set up more. But the idea will be to make our building feel, I don't know, like active and fun without it being an obligation, which sometimes it feels like an obligation to go to parent teacher night and open houses and stuff like that. So yes, you'll see a lot more of that as the school year progresses. We're really fortunate for the great support from the tribe, because a lot of last spring, last fall, I wrote 2% grants, we were given 2% grants, so that I can really fit them all and stuff like this in one of them.
Thank you.
So later in the board meeting tonight, we're asking the board to approve the student handbook for the alternative education program. They all have the handbook and they have the opportunity to review that. Do you want to just talk a little bit about that process that you all worked on? I think I'll pull that up.
Yeah. So our goal with the Oasis student handbook was really to make it as comparable to the middle school and high school handbook, as the majority of our students are coming from there. So we had a small team, Jeff, myself, Joyce, and our MBE coach went through the entire handbook. It's very similar to the middle school and high school. We just made sure that we updated anything that didn't translate. Some of the behavior things are a little bit different, because virtual is an option for them, and it's not an option at the middle school or high school, so there are a few differences there, just in the structure of the day. But otherwise, for the most part, the handbook is very similar. The cell phone policy is very similar, they will be expected to keep it out of sight. But given, you know, very passing tax, they'll have access to it. But it won't really, I mean, we took theirs and really just modified anything that wasn't fitting. Do you have any other major changes?
Stephanie's saying it exactly right, because we took the high school and middle school handbooks, and if there wasn't a strong reason to change it, we just left the same language as the high school and middle school, which should really support our kids, because 99% of them are coming from the middle school or the high school. So this will be information that they already know and understand. And so unless there was a really important reason to change it, like Stephanie said, with things like virtual and sometimes class schedules, a number of hours in the day, it just doesn't translate. But if it translates, we just left it. So yeah, it should be very similar. Well, it is very similar.
Thanks very much. Transition over. The last item on our report this evening is just reminding everyone about back-to-school information. We are maybe in back-to-school season. So as we shared earlier, our, our new staff were with us today during Capture Kids' Hearts Year One. They are with us today and tomorrow. And then the rest of our certified staff and support staff return on Wednesday. Our drivers were working today, doing trainings, contacting families. We're back, we're up and running, and we're ready to go. So the graphic that I put up on the board is just our open house information. All of our open houses are Wednesday and Thursday night this week. And then we have sort of Friday and Monday off, and then we start school with students on Tuesday. So there's a lot of good energy, a lot of really positive things happening. I will just say, just so that everyone's on the same page, you're probably hearing this in a lot of different places, we do have four buildings that were just opened to our staff yesterday at noon. So that's Pullen McQuire, the middle school, and Fancher, because of all the construction that happened this summer. So we're very busy cleaning, setting up classrooms, and getting things ready to go. But there will be some additional dust and maybe some additional chaos at our open house time as we, you know, continue to clean up the construction that happened. As we've been replacing our air handling systems, we've talked about that here quite a bit, but it's important for folks to know that in every classroom, there is a unit vent that was removed and replaced for the warm and cool air to be able to flow through and into the classroom. And unfortunately, the size of the vents that were removed and replaced were not completely the same. So that means that not only was the vent taken out on the insides, also most of them have casing around them that include bookshelves and things like that. So a lot of that had to be rebuilt, and every classroom is slightly different. So everything was a little bit different, and you know, when you move anything, there's a lot of dust and other things that get stirred up. So our staff is really working hard to get everything as ready as possible. Our maintenance staff does an outstanding job, our cleaning crew has been amazing. But the long and short of it is, there's just a lot. So we're hopeful that our community will be patient with us as we bring everybody back in this week and get ready to go for next week. So we're excited. Another big thing that we're launching, in case you haven't seen information on it, is a student and parent app for transportation. So for our elementary students, every time they get on the bus, they swipe a card. Every time they get off the bus, they swipe a card. Their ID badges will be on reels that we'll provide, that hopefully they'll put on their backpacks, so it'll be easy for the drivers to help them. And then there's a parent app, so you can see if a bus is running late, you can see exactly when it's coming to your stop and all those things. So Robin and our transportation department is working pretty diligently to get all the information out regarding that app and to get everybody signed up so they have all the information. So that'll be an exciting change that we're really excited about, not only for communication, so you know where your child is at all times, but also the safety, so that we can guarantee when your student got on the bus and when your student got off the bus and all those kinds of pieces. So it's an exciting and hectic time, and it will all come together perfectly next week, but it sometimes doesn't always feel that way. Do you all have questions about the start of the school year?
Jennifer, I have a question for transportation. Do you notice it looks like similar numbers to last year for requests of students?
For number of students wanting to write in, well, actually, I think that our ridership will be increased. I think we have more requests, so Robin initially had a date, and I may not have the exact date right. I think she wanted everyone signed up by August 9th, and then the system was going so well that she extended that another week. So she's still taking signups now, but we're at a point where we can't guarantee transportation on the first day of school. So students will sign up, and maybe the second or third day, we'll get them on a route. So I think our routes are going to be packed. We do not have additional routes this year, so we were not able to hire any additional drivers. We are still actively looking for drivers so that we could add routes to either make the current routes that we have smaller, or then to add back in district busing or in city busing. But right now, we're ready to go with exactly what we had from last year.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the start of the school year? That's all from our report on this evening.
Thank you, Jennifer. And our Oasis scheme, Stephanie, before I realized your words, I also wanted to thank you, thank both of you for coming tonight and showing us all this information. We know it's a lot of work to do all this. It's a big thank you, guys, before we move on. Next, we have our requested financial report.
Good evening. I have a financial report for you for July, comparing the year 2020, 2021, all the way through the years 2024, 2025. It's going to be a small report this month, because it's the first month of fiscal year. So for general fund, you can see our revenue expenditures are right on target across all five years. For special service funds, again, it's not much activity in the month of July, so just getting started for our fiscal year. For the treasurer's report, for general fund, on June 30th, we had a cash balance of $10 million. We have receipts in the month of July of $8.6 million and dispersments of $6.4 million. That brings us a balance on July 31st of $12.2 million. For the debt retirement fund, on June 30th, we had a cash balance of $192,000. We have receipts, tax revenue basically coming in in the month of July of $43,000, and no dispersments for July. That brings us a balance on July 31st of $236,000. And for our capital projects fund, for July, we had a cash balance on June 30th of $23.5 million. We had interest income of $94,800 and dispersments of close to $4 million in the month of July. That brings us a balance on July 31st of $19.6 million. That is tied exactly to what Jennifer just reported on, that's been happening all summer. I know that was quick. Are there any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And next, we have correspondence. We have not received any correspondence since our last board meeting, nor do we have any requests to speak to citizens' requests to address the board this evening. So let's get to move on to our consent agenda. The first thing for our consent agenda is the approval of the minutes from the August 5th, 2024.
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose? All right, thank you. And then we also have to approve the bills. So I have a motion to approve our bills for the month.
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose? Thank you, everybody. Under new business, the first thing we have to do is talk or approve or not the strategic plan approval for the 2024 to 2029.
So I do have in your board deck this evening a memo, a word that does, first of all, my own strategic plan is was presented by Michigan Association of School Ward. This plan is meant to establish our mission, vision, beliefs, and goal statements that will begin in 2024 and take us through 2029. So we're asking that you approve the strategic plan as presented this evening.
Is that a vocal?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I didn't think so, but just, okay, thank you. Any questions before we move forward on this report? We have a motion to approve the MPP strategic plans presented effective August 19th.
Sub move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose? Thank you. And I think it's a very exciting time to see, I mean, I think the last strategic plan got derailed pretty hard with COVID. And so that, no one's fault, it's just, you know, it's what it is. It's just to have a new plan that is current, that reflects where we are today, with so much community engagement. I think it makes me very hopeful of the next five years by district. I'm really excited to have a chance to see it through, and it'll be very nice to see this launch. I want to thank everyone, including community members, staff, administration, all of you, because that took a lot of effort and work, especially doing it in a fairly condensed manner, which I actually really enjoyed as opposed to the long process that can be quite lengthy. And I do feel like it reflects where we are today, and so it'll be exciting to see and see what we do with it. Our next new business is the Oasis student plan approval.
So again, we have in your board deck this evening our student handbook for the alternative education programs for the 24, 25 school year. We're asking that you approve this handbook as presented effective this evening. And if you remember, just on August 5th, we did approve all the handbooks for all the other buildings, knowing that we wanted Jeff and Stephanie to be able to join us this evening, we rated to do the Oasis one until this evening.
I'd like to propose that we do the same thing as what we did for the other handbook, which is to approve, but with a commitment to, once we're done with the policies, go through our handbooks systematically and make sure that you align with our policies. And so I want to kind of reiterate this, we did approve that that time, but I find that that's an important commitment on our side as well. Have a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose? Thank you, everybody. I know it's a commitment that we're making, I do think it's an important one, and I'm excited to see our work as we go through and move forward. Next, we have resignations. Yes, you have a memo to please accept the resignation of Erin Kipmacher from the GTech Center and Stacy Foydexter, art teacher, and all those among us. We have a motion to accept the resignation of our two staff members.
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose? All right, thank you. And then we have new hires.
Yes, we have a memo of four new hires tonight. Please welcome Patricia Campow, electronic learning facilitator, Oasis Alternative Education; Andrea Devaney, electronic learning facilitator, Oasis Alternative Education; Lyndall Heaton, electronic learning facilitator, Oasis Alternative Education; Anna Crass, art teacher, Fancher Elementary; and Sydney Wellman, special education teacher, Moffleton High School.
Do we have a motion to accept the hire of our five new staff members?
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose? Thank you, everybody. Welcome to the district. It's exciting to see all the names.
I do just want to say that our room today was packed. I think room 111 seats, 75 people, and almost every chair was filled. And there were certainly some staff members that couldn't attend last year that were there. But I just really want to thank Linda and all of our administrative team, because they interviewed like crazy all summer, and I'm really, really excited about our new group of staff members coming in. It's going to be a good year.
Standing to you. That brings us to our board of education discussion table.
I would just have to highlight the open houses and encourage everyone to attend the open houses. They are a great experience and a great way to help your student transition, either into the building or transition from summer to back to school. They help change their frame of reference, but they do a wonderful job, and I would highly encourage everyone to go. And I would like to also thank the staffs for stepping in at the last minute and being able to get their classrooms up to speed as best as they can with no expectations, because that's a big lift, and on their own. But that's a lot of anxiety and a lot of work for a lot of educators. So they served the year hard, but hopefully they will get going quickly.
I'm going to add to this, if I can, to encourage us to attend. We all have a year's old school that we try to follow as much as we can during the calendar year. And so if your school has an open house that you can attend, and I understand we all have scheduled some busy lives, but to encourage you to let your building principal know, even maybe, you know, let them put you to work. I always find if I attend one of those, I'm doing something, it's easier to interact with the goal of just being visible and for you all to see what our open house is. I got another one. I want to thank you all for attending the MAB training last week. It was in the evening, again, a low hour time is precious. That's a mandatory training for our superintendent evaluation that we have to do, I think, every three years. And so it was great that most of us could make it, and yeah, I'm just appreciating the fault.
I just had, I had two. So a reminder that the People's Traditional Powah, the 18th Annual, is August 24th and 25th, and that's at the seventh generation Powah grounds at Siamachalang, the tribe here. And then I just wanted to share that I went to the Summer Institute this past weekend. There was a lot of learning, and I have lots of questions for different, about different things, but... But it was, it was great. So I'm looking forward to the conference in October.
It's coming up. We're here. Well, thank you, everybody, and wish everyone a great return to school. Thanks. And that joins everything.